If everyone could take their seats, we're going to start shortly. Thank you very much.
How are you doing? Okay? I didn't, I actually had been out of incognito since.
Clerk Mayor.
We're going to go ahead and call the committee, the whole meeting, to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumboy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
And Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and start with public comment, and public comment, each speaker will have up to three minutes. And I'm going to, there are four public comment cards, and I'm going to go ahead and read them all if you'd please be ready. First is our distinguished county board chair, Matt Sorenson, then Gary Lambert, Patricia Martin, and Sue Feldcamp, in that order. Mr. Chairman, would you please come forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The, the phone rings in your 911 dispatch center. The MedCom or the, the call center rep takes that call and starts talking to an individual who clearly needs help and assistance. Maybe that call is from a spouse or a child, talking about their father or their mother. They need help. Simultaneously, the dispatch center rep is also entering that address into a sophisticated data system that says, hey, there's a history of issues at this address, mental health issues. So as they dispatch police and fire from the Bloomington staff, they also dispatch a mental health counselor who shows up on site alongside a Bloomington police officer, Bloomington Fire Department, and they assess the situation. They come to the conclusion that this is maybe not a situation that requires police service, or fire service, or even EMS service, but it's a situation that requires mental health services, behavioral health services, a counselor. Somebody who can reconnect that individual with a case manager that maybe they'd seen in the past at the Center for Human Services, or a counselor that they have been in contact with somewhere in the Bro Men system, or the Advocate system. So they start connecting the dots. Maybe that person gets taken to a critical crisis care center instead of to the McLean County Jail, or to a hospital. Regardless, that person is being routed into a path for their well-being and for the well-being of our community more quickly. That police officer, those EMS staff folks, those fire department personnel are returned to the street where they can take the next call more quickly. That's a real-life dollars and cents issue for the city of Bloomington, the town of Normal, and McLean County as a whole. That's a component of the Mental Health Action Plan, and that is one of dozens of components of the Mental Health Action Plan that we are asking the Bloomington City Council to consider helping to support financially through a quarter cent sales tax that you'll take up and discuss later this evening. In the meantime, believe me, I've been an elected official for almost 20 years in McLean County. And while I don't necessarily suggest to any of you that I get the same kind of public criticism, although it's happened over the years, as you guys probably face on a day-in, day-out, week-in, week-out basis, absolutely understand the critical nature of balancing a budget, making hard decisions, and I understand, I'm asking you to make another hard decision tonight, and I'm confident that this city council will make the right decision for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. And I really correct our speakers, but it's been 21 years. Wasn't it 94?
You show your age.
Gary Lambert, and Patricia Martin, and Sue Feldcamp.
Good afternoon. Here's a Panograph article from Sunday's paper. It says balancing the budget. In that article, Mr. Renner has quoted saying, "This exceeds my expectations because it's balanced and thorough." He goes on to list several different kinds. They are recommending a penny-on-the-dollar sales tax increase. That's roughly a 60% increase on the city of Bloomington's sales tax. On the online edition of Sunday's paper, that same article is titled, "Council to Consider Budget Cut Recommendations Monday." I sat through all those budget meetings. I looked at slides. I don't see any budget cuts. I see a lot of recommendations for cost shifting, taking out Bloomington's budget and putting it on the budget of some other taxing body. To the group's credit, they had recommended not going ahead with the accelerated pension payment, but then at the last minute, we came in and said, not we, the finance department, and said, "We don't need to do that. Good news, we found $800,000." Kind of reminds me of the park situation we had like a year and a half ago. We had turned them down initially for a half million dollar park improvement, and lo and behold, two days later, or thereabouts, splashed on the Panograph, "We found half a million dollars." Went to a councilman's meeting here a few weeks ago, picked up one of these little cards, talked about what the general fund is used for. And maybe it's been said before, but I hadn't seen it. There is no reference at all in there for the general fund for the road. Maybe this makes the divorce official from the general fund, continuing that on. But one last comment in here. "The U.S. cellular coliseum and others are expected to be self-supporting so that the revenue from and expenses incurred by these funds are excluded from the general fund. The question I have for each of you is when might the citizens of Bloomington see that enforced?" Thank you.
Patricia Martin, again, and then Sue Feldcamp.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the forthcoming budgetary decisions, I wish to repeat what I feel are some of the special needs of my generation, with the hope that you will be able to meet them in some form, by understanding that they are necessary for our security and well-being at this most difficult point in our life. The mental health issue is and should be paramount, given not just the local but national incidents that appear regularly in our media. Again, we must also realize that in addition to such recorded incidents, there are internal incidents in facilities and families elsewhere that are not reported and are even hidden. You, our administrators, must also deal with such incidents, protect all of us. And I'm especially grateful to Tom Barr, Executive Director of the Center of Human Services, for pointing this out in his talk last week, and of course, for Mr. Sorenson just now. The law enforcement officials are most significant in handling such issues as well, and must be given the utmost assistance and support needed, considering their current efforts to share their duties and problems with us. This applies to the firefighters, too, for according to the Fire and Police Commission, some 78% of their work is rescue work. Some time ago, I had to call for help in the middle of the night, and was taken to the hospital for an emergency operation that was successful due to the efforts of the ambulance drivers and the hospital staff. The firefighters must have the ambulances and staff that they need. The police in our communities have helped me at various levels. They have reassured me in the winter that I won't be snowed in, and have listened intently to an equally serious report that my attorney had me file, also for my protection. Afterwards, seeing how upset I was, they told me that I should not hesitate to contact them again if necessary. "We are here to help you," they said. And this comment helped restore my sense of security. And we must remember that this is the role that they are trained to play. Additional services like connect transit also need assistance, especially on Sundays, when those of us who don't or can't drive have problems getting around. Some time ago, not recently, I have walked as far as downtown Normal from my home near Washington School, once to see a movie, and another time to catch a train. And I would like to talk about this at a future session as well. And finally, our historic downtown. You, Mr. Mayor, are justifiably proud of our history, and are helping to develop it enthusiastically. So please continue to give assistance to organizations like the BCPA, and also help search for private funding, obviously, so they can continue their programs in their original setting and manner. And I look forward to the cabinet of Dr. Calagari in October. Finally, please remember, as Senator Iris Martinez so eloquently stated at a hearing in Springfield this summer, that you are government, not corporations, and your job is to give particular assistance to those of us who are the most vulnerable. For we do need your assistance, and just as important, your understanding. And this is what you should be willing and able to accomplish at your best. And thank you very much, again.
Thank you, Patricia. Sue?
Good evening. The city of Bloomington spends too much of my money. I want some for me. Our taxes are being wasted on many things. We need good infrastructure done. We really need the roads fixed. That's most people's complaints. We don't need a coliseum that is always in the red. The BCPA is always in the red. It'd be nice to have those. They're fun, but we don't need them. Our taxes are going to go up tonight, I'm guessing, and I understand that. I want money going to the firemen. I want money going to the policemen. I want my roads fixed. I want safety, and I want the mental health taken care of. But all I'm asking is, please, when you take my taxes that I work hard for, please be responsible when you spend the money, and let us know where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and write along to the approval of the minutes of the August 17th Committee, the whole meeting, as their motion to essentially approve these minutes and dispense with the actual formal reading.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Painter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. And at this point, we can do this by voice vote. Alderman favor, city of high by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We move right along to the presentation of the Budget Task Force, the committee final recommendations, and we're going to turn this over to Alderman Scott Black. But I do want to thank all of the Budget Task Force Committee members who are in the audience. Thank you all so much for your work. And Alderman Sage, Deanna Froschi, for being co-chairs of this. This was an arduous task, a thankless job, but we very much appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. Alderman Black?
It's weird being on this side of the dais. It's intimidating. So.
I've got some tomatoes here I'm going to be throwing.
That's fine. And I can see what people are talking about. So no, this is, this is good. And I'm very pleased to be here, and I appreciate everyone listening in on this recommendation. So the committee selected me last, our last meeting, to give the presentation today. My goal is to go through the presentation itself. We'll save questions to the end, and those questions will be fielded by the Task Force members. So the Task Force members are here. Can I have everybody stand up as the Task Force members, so everybody can recognize them? So I think everyone deserves a round of applause here for the work they've done thus far. Thank you. Cool. All right. No, I am that guy now. Okay. So the purpose. So on May 11th, the council approved the Task Force, which is designed to examine and make recommendations that outline the different approaches to address the city's long-term structural budget challenges, work with city staff to produce budget scenarios that provide the city council with options to address the long-term structural deficit, and present a report to the city council at its workshop here in September. So here we are. So you guys have a better understanding of, and the public as well, about the Budget Task Force process. We have met nine times between the end of May through last week. We had one meeting where our basic discussion was about process. We had two meetings about background information. So we wanted to bring the Task Force up to speed on some of the presentations that you've seen before. Nothing in those presentations was discussed that we haven't been presented publicly, so these are things that we've seen at citizen summit, work sessions on the budget. Then we had four meetings that primarily were spent discussing budget cuts and reductions. We had one meeting primarily spent discussing revenue increases, and then we had one meeting summarizing the recommendation. Throughout the, the process through December, as you all well know, we've had several touch points with council, whether that be publicly, through Alderman Sage's updates, or just on the back end chatting with everybody over the phone. So the idea here is that this shouldn't be neither a surprise, nor a silver bullet. So we, I will be looking forward to taking your questions later. Just so you can kind of get an idea as to what we're going to be looking at moving forward after this, today's the presentation itself, and we'll have some back and forth. But then, starting in October, staff's going to be crafting resolutions to each of these recommendations for the council to vote on. So some folks had been under the impression that there'd be one omnibus package of all the recommendations. But as you all well know, and the public knows as well, a lot of times there are ideas that are thrown out there in the public, we should look into this, we should look into that. And, and I really view, and I think the Task Force would agree, that, that money is a resource, but so is staff time. And I think it's important that the council speak with one voice on a lot of these very controversial issues to staff to say, yes, we want to look into this and be specific with those directions. So, at a high level, the recommendation. So the recommendations presented are going to show Budget Task Force consensus. So there was a lot of discussion on some of these topics, and you know, many of them, if not all of them, are controversial and have a lot of pros and cons to them. So you're seeing the consensus from the Task Force. Because I have to say, individual members might disagree with points here and there, but by and large, this is where the, the Task Force has fallen. At a philosophical level, a lot of the focus was on citizens should pay for the services consumed. So if you take more of the city's services, you, you have a higher cost. And fees should be aligned with service costs. So if it costs the city X amount of dollars, the fee should be X amount of dollars as well. Based on the feedback that we've gotten from not only the council, but the public at a number of different events, we looked at a combination of new revenue and service cuts. One thing that we want to make very clear, though, is that we don't want to have new revenue going towards new programs or departments. And another philosophy that we have as well is that Bloomington and other governmental partners should share in that the cost equal to their use and benefit. So there's been some discussion in recent months and years about how Bloomington used to carry more of the weight towards things, and that's something that the Task Force thinks is a practice that should be discontinued. All right. So, based on everything, and these are all going to be things you've seen before, we kind of have five groupings that we're going to be talking about. So we have program reductions and eliminations, service reductions and eliminations, shared services, alternative service delivery, and operational efficiencies in service delivery. Before we jump into those, I think we need to talk about two really key issues. And number one would be the police and fire pension funding. So right out the gate, this council passed an ordinance a couple of years back to fully fund our pensions, and we took a very aggressive stance. You may have noted that in some of the earlier drafts that you've seen from Budget Task Force included a $1.5 million reduction in the pension funding, in order to smooth out some of the ramp-up payment towards the back end. Based on our new revised estimates, Patty Lynn talked about it at our previous meeting, we don't need to go down that route. So we have new revised estimates that we are still following our pension policy. That said, moving into fiscal 20-year, excuse me, fiscal year 2018 and beyond, that's not to say that we shouldn't be looking into reviewing that schedule to obviously exceed the minimum, state minimum required payments, and then also supporting the council policy of 100% funding by 2041. Everyone's favorite topic, solid waste. We've talked about this on a number of occasions. So here are some of the suggestions that the Task Force wanted to bring forward. So starting in fiscal year 2017, so a lot of this has a very quick turnaround time, is that there was a discussion about implementing a first bucket charge for curbside bulk waste pickup, and that would exclude the branch and shrubbery. So that would, any of the yard waste would be excluded from that. Increase the bucket charge for additional curbside bulk waste pickup, and bulk waste city, excuse me, the bulk waste at the city drop-off site remains free. Some other suggestions that the, the Task Force wanted to present was to review the 35-gallon refuse can fee. That's the one that is the smallest, and that has no increases. Also, outsource the entire solid waste program was suggested, and a special bulk waste charge for landlords was also suggested. So again, this, these are things that we're throwing out there that eventually will come back through a resolution from staff for us to vote on. So there's a lot of different things in here that you may see, you may agree with some of them, maybe not, but they'll come back in the form of resolution to be voted on. Some additional comments regarding solid waste is that funding solid waste with property taxes penalizes businesses, as they already must pay these expenses. So when we raise property taxes on, to conceivably pay for a solid waste program, we have businesses that are required to have their own source, and so we're asking them to pay for residents. So that was something that needed to be brought up. And the general fund would cover the cost from the brush and the shrubbery for the bulk waste. And then, moving on between, after 2018, we're going to be reviewing the bucket charge increases. And this was an important note that the Task Force continues, wanted to make sure that we had continued to focus on, is the potential increased cost as our landfills begin to close. So we've seen some alarming reports about, you know, several years out, we're looking at some landfills that might be closing, and that will definitely have impacts on our cost, and we should keep that in mind moving forward. So program reduction and eliminations. So we're going to talk about a couple of different things here, and these are things that we want to put forward, but we understand that there are certain things that on the back end that may or may not be feasible, but it's important that we have the discussion. So number one is to seek full reimbursement for the school resource officer. You've heard a lot of talk about that over probably the last year or so, and that could potentially save $300,000. Downtown hire-back is a perennial issue that we've talked about on a number of occasions, and the Task Force thinks that that cost should be borne by those who are benefiting from that service. And additional note that is warranted with the school resource officer is that we need to be very careful to study the impact of eliminating what that position would be if the schools are unable to fund such a position. So looking at 2017 miscellaneous department reductions, so the BCPA operational audit is currently underway, and then we also want to make sure that we take into account the potential of the 501(c)(3) organization status for the BCPA Foundation. Some other suggestions that the Budget Task Force wanted to put forward is to sell the creativity center, sell the BCPA entirely, and that would eliminate $1 million in annual operating expenses, which have to pay the bond on the property. Convert the BCPA to an enterprise fund, and just reduce the BCPA as $250,000. So again, a lot of ideas here. These will come back in the form of resolution for a later discussion. Another thing for kind of a long-term process, this has kind of been nibble at the edges over the last few months here, is the explore formation of a park district, whether that be just a city having its own park district, but perhaps city and town of Normal, maybe a city, town, and county, what that might look like for the service that's delivered, as well as what that might look for the taxpayer. And then also, we can adopt an ordinance or a policy for the parks and rec revenues to cover X amount of expenditures. So currently, it's 50%, you know, and then maybe have low-income considerations. So for instance, you know, the fees would be more in line with the cost of the service, but we also want to maintain that, that care towards low-income participants in those programs. Shared services, 2017, looking at, seek maximum cost recovery of the 800, excuse me, $480,000 estimated expenses for CERA aircraft and rescue and firefighting. We've heard about this before, that the 24/7 operations the city provides to CERA. Moving beyond 2017, kind of in the long range, review the police firing range cost recovery, and of course, the ETSB, Emergency 911 revenue sharing. We talked about that, I'd say, about six or seven months ago. Alternative service delivery. So before 2017, initiated review of outsourcing golf operations for fiscal year 27, 2017 budget adoption. So that's an idea that's been floated and talked about very publicly recently, and that's one that we support looking into. Also, review selling all three golf courses by 2017 budget adoption. So right around the corner. Also, looking beyond 2017, looking at 2018, we want to revise the policy for the golf enterprise fund, that if any outside fund transfer is needed, it automatically triggers a review to contract out golf course operating expenses. And then also explore combining both internal and external management for the coliseum and the BCPA. So looking at the operational efficiencies and service deliveries, one thing that we think is important is that as the fiscal year 2017 budget process starts, all departments should develop a contingency 5% reduction plan, just across the board, to have that available. We are still uncertain about what the state of Illinois is going to be up to, and so it's important that we make that come to the forefront. And then looking for 2018 and beyond is we want to allocate budget resources to investigate operational efficiencies in all departments. So this, this goes back to that idea that it's worth investing to make sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck. And then a total compensation plan and job audit review for all city employee positions. So this is a top-to-bottom review of are compensations in line with similar positions? Is it comparable to the private sector? Does it go back to that idea that in some cases, you know, that the public sector may be paid less, but they have a better pension, that type of thing? Revenues. So as a principle, there is a Budget Task Force preference to consider city license and fee increases, home real sales tax, and property taxes. Now, there are other venues that the Budget Task Force could have looked at in terms of taxes, but these are the ones that we primarily focused on. For principles, as proposed revenue increases are reviewed, we want to stay below current central Illinois communities, and using the town of Normal as a benchmark, for obvious reasons. And by ordinance and policy, new revenues be targeted for specific new budget expenditures. So very clear line of sight between what the new revenue would be raised for and where that money would go. So looking at fiscal year 2017, complete the city's comprehensive fee and rate study, and prepare for a cost recovery policy decisions with phased implementation, using the town of Normal as a benchmark for, and align actual costs. So that's, we passed that at the last council meeting, and we'll be reviewing that. It's a recommendation from the Task Force. There's also a recommendation to increase the home real sales tax up to a half percent to help address the fiscal year 17 structural deficit, with consideration for the council to explore up to an additional half percent to address other specific targeted expenses. So this might be capital, this might be pensions, very specific. We want to be clear about creating that line of sight. And there's also discussion about property tax increase to 1.35, which would equate to about $645,000 annually, tied to police and pension funding.
If not all of them are controversial and have a lot of pros and cons to them. So you're seeing the consensus from the task force. Because I'd have to say individual members might disagree with points here and there, but by and large is where the task force has fallen. At a philosophical level, a lot of the focus was on citizens should pay for the services consumed. So if you take more of the city's services, you have a higher cost. And fees should be aligned with service costs. So if it costs the city X amount of dollars, the fee should be X amount of dollars as well. Based on the feedback that we've gotten from not only the council but the public at a number of different events, we looked at a combination of new revenue and service cuts. One thing that we want to make very clear though is that we don't want to have new revenue going towards new programs or departments. And another philosophy that we have as well is that Bloomington and other governmental partners should share in that the cost equal to their use and benefit. So there's been some discussion in recent months and years about how Bloomington used to carry more of the weight towards things and that's something that the task force thinks is a practice that should be discontinued. All right. So based on everything, and these are all going to be things you've seen before, we kind of have five groupings that we're going to be talking about. So we have program reductions and eliminations, service reductions and eliminations, shared services, alternative service delivery, and operational efficiencies and service delivery. Before we jump into those, I think we need to talk about two really key issues. And number one would be the police and fire pension funding. So right out the gate, this council passed an ordinance a couple of years back to fully fund our pensions, and we took a very aggressive stance. You may have noted that in some of the earlier drafts that you've seen from budget task force included a $1.5 million reduction in the pension funding in order to smooth out some of the ramp-up payment towards the backend. Based on our new revised estimates, Patty Lynn talked about it at our previous meeting, we don't need to go down that route. So we have new revised estimates that we are still following our pension policy. That said, moving into fiscal 20-year, excuse me, fiscal year 2018 and beyond, that's not to say that we shouldn't be looking into reviewing that schedule to obviously exceed the minimum, state minimum required payments, and then also supporting the council policy of 100% funding by 2041. Everyone's favorite topic, solid waste. We've talked about this on a number of occasions. So here are some of the suggestions that the task force wanted to bring forward. So starting in fiscal year 2017, so a lot of this has a very quick turnaround time, is that there was a discussion about implementing a first bucket charge for curbside bulk waste pickup, and that would exclude the branch and shrubbery. So that would, any of the yard waste would be excluded from that. Increase the bucket charge for additional curbside bulk waste pickup, and bulk waste city, excuse me, the bulk waste if the city drop-off site remains free. Some other suggestions that the task force wanted to present was to review the 35-gallon refuse can fee. That's the one that is the smallest, and that has no increases. Also, outsource the entire solid waste program was suggested, and a special bulk waste charge for landlords was also suggested. So again, these are things that we're throwing out there that eventually will come back through a resolution from staff for us to vote on. So there's a lot of different things in here that you may see, you may agree with some of them, maybe not, but they'll come back in the form of resolution to be voted on. Some additional comments regarding solid waste is that funding solid waste with property taxes penalizes businesses as they already must pay these expenses. So when we raise property taxes on, to conceivably pay for a solid waste program, we have businesses that are required to have their own source, and so we're asking them to pay for residents. So that was something that needed to be brought up. And the general fund would cover the cost from the brush and the shrubbery for the bulk And then moving on between, after 2018, we're going to be reviewing the bucket charge increases. And this was an important note that the task force continues, wanted to make sure that we had continued to focus on, is the potential increased cost as our landfills begin to close. So we've seen some alarming reports about, you know, several years out, we're looking at some landfills that might be closing, and that will definitely have impacts on our cost, and we should keep that in mind moving forward. So program reduction and eliminations. So we're going to talk about a couple of different things here, and these are things that we want to put forward, but we understand that there are certain things that on the backend that may or may not be feasible, but it's important that we have the discussion. So number one is to seek full reimbursement for the school resource officer. You've heard a lot of talk about that over probably the last year or so, and that could potentially save $300,000. Downtown hire-back is a perennial issue that we've talked about on a number of occasions, and the task force thinks that that cost should be borne by those who are benefiting from that service. An additional note that is warranted with the school resource officer is that we need to be very careful to study the impact of eliminating what that position would be if the schools are unable to fund such a position. So looking at 2017 miscellaneous department reductions, so the BCPA operational audit is currently underway, and then we also want to make sure that we take into account the potential of the 501(c)(3) organization status for the BCPA Foundation. Some other suggestions that the budget task force wanted to put forward is to sell the creativity center, sell the BCPA entirely, and that would eliminate $1 million in annual operating expenses, which self to pay the bond on the property. Convert the PCPA to an enterprise fund, and just reduce the BCPA as $250,000. So again, a lot of ideas here, these will come back in the form of a resolution for a later discussion. Another thing for kind of a long-term process, this has kind of been nibble at the edges over the last few months here, is the explore formation of a park district, whether that be just a city having its own park district, but perhaps city and town and normal, maybe a city, town, and county, what that might look like for the service that's delivered, as well as what that might look for the taxpayer. And then also, we can adopt an ordinance or a policy for the parks and rec revenues to cover X amount of expenditures. So currently it's 50%, you know, and then maybe have low-income considerations. So for instance, you know, the fees would be more in line with the cost of the service, but we also want to maintain that care towards low-income participants in those programs. Shared services, 2017, looking at, seek maximum cost recovery of the 800, excuse me, $480,000 estimated expenses for CERA aircraft and rescue and firefighting. We've heard about this before, that 24/7 operations the city provides to CERA. Moving beyond 2017, kind of in the long range, review the police firing range cost recovery, and of course, the ETSB, emergency 911 run revenue sharing. We talked about that, I'd say about six or seven months ago. Alternative service delivery. So before 2017, initiate a review of outsourcing golf operations for fiscal year 27, 2017 budget adoption. So that's an idea that's been floated and talked about very publicly recently, and that's one that we support looking into. Also, review selling all three golf courses by 2017 budget adoption, so right around the corner. Also, looking beyond 2017, looking at 2018, we want to revise the policy for the golf enterprise fund, that if any outside fund transfer is needed, it automatically triggers a review to contract out golf course operating expenses. And then also explore combining both internal and external management for the Coliseum and the BCPA. So looking at the operational efficiencies and service deliveries, one thing that we think is important is that as the fiscal year 2017 budget process starts, all departments should develop a contingency 5% reduction plan, just across the board, to have that available. We are still uncertain about what the state of Illinois is going to be up to, and so it's important that we make that come to the forefront. And then looking for 2018 and beyond is we want to allocate budget resources to investigate operational efficiencies in all departments. So this goes back to that idea that it's worth investing to make sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck. And then a total compensation plan and job audit review for all city employee positions. So this is a top-to-bottom review of are compensations in line with similar positions? Is it comparable to the private sector? Does it go back to that idea that in some cases, you know, that the public sector may be paid less, but they have a better pension, that type of thing? Revenues. So as a principle, there is a budget task force preference to consider city license and fee increases, home real sales tax and property taxes. Now, there are other venues that the budget task force could have looked at in terms of taxes, but these are the ones that we primarily focused on. For principles, as proposed revenue increases are reviewed, we want to stay below current central Illinois communities and using the town of Normal as a benchmark, for obvious reasons. And by ordinance and policy, new revenues be targeted for specific new budget expenditures. So very clear line of sight between what the new revenue would be raised for and where that money would go. So looking at fiscal year 2017, complete the city's comprehensive fee and rate study and prepare for a cost recovery policy decisions with phased implementation, using the town of Normal as a benchmark for, and align actual costs. So that's, we passed that at the last council meeting, and we'll be reviewing that. It's a recommendation from the task force. There's also a recommendation to increase the home real sales tax up to a half percent to help address the fiscal year 17 structural deficit, with consideration for the council to explore up to an additional half percent to address other specific targeted expenses. So this might be capital, this might be pensions, very specific, we want to be clear about creating that line of sight. And there's also discussion about property tax increase to 1.35, which would equate to about $645,000 annually, tied to police and pension funding, and of course, increasing golf course fees. Moving for 2018 and beyond, we've talked about sending overdue parking tickets to a collection agency, reviewing and implementing a computer system and hardware to move operations of the three parking decks the city owns to a 24, a 24/7 operation, and review downtown master plan, specifically the parking recommendations was one that we wanted to focus on. There's a number of those recommendations that are in there that we think is worthy of council review. I also want to note that some of these ideas came not only from task force members but also members of the public. So here we are. So our goal was to look at, at very high level, the budget structure of the city. So this is, shouldn't be looked at as a recommendation to be a solution, but just more recommendations of key ideas that we're giving to you guys to, for council consideration, review, and action. So you've seen many very provocative things that are up here, and many controversial things, and we think these are worthy of further conversation. I just want to thank my task force members and staff for their hard work this summer. So we'll take your questions now.
Questions?
Either for me or the task force members.
I'll ask a question. I'm interested in this idea about a total compensation review, so I could see two outcomes of that that make me kind of nervous. One, either that we're really overpaying people, or that we're really underpaying people. So I, could you kind of fill in the blanks about that and what that means?
I think that, I think it could go either direction. You know, what we heard from members of the public in emails that we were receiving or outside conversations were, there were positions that people felt we were overpaying for right now, where the positions were being compared to maybe other public entities but not to the private sector, and they weren't aligning with where compensation should be. You know, if we've got one person who's driving a truck for the city and one person who's driving a truck for a private entity in town, what does that look like? Where do the compensation packages for them be?
Oh, I guess I'm trying to think about the next step of that. And I'm not arguing with you that it's a bad idea, it sounds like a really good idea. Just trying to think about how that plays out, if it's, say, within a union, and we've negotiated a salary, you know, wages and benefits and that kind of thing, and then I don't know how, I guess, I don't know, that's a David and a legal question, I don't know how we, HR question, I don't know what we do with that information. I mean, is that, is that an actionable, I guess I'm asking, is it, is it something that we can do anything about if we proceed that down that?
I believe such a study is critical, because first and foremost, we want to be able to recruit and retain, you know, outstanding talent. And as you know, you know, over 80% of our workforce is members of a collective bargaining agreement. However, the other, even the other employees that are not unionized, we're in competition with not only the private sector but the public sector. And especially when unions come into play, if we do go to mediation, and definitely with interest arbitration, one thing we need to look at first and foremost is, what is the public sector paying for talent out there, especially as it becomes much more challenging to recruit that talent? But also, this information will help the council to set a compensation strategy going forward, because as indicated by the task force, we also sometimes are compared ourselves as a city to the private sector. And very often, the private sector is sometimes paying less. You know, in many cases, private sector doesn't provide pensions as their retirement benefit, they provide defined contribution plans, which is much risky. So ultimately, we're looking for the council with this data, with this information, to help establish that compensation strategy for us, so that we know exactly, you know, what we are looking for in the future, and how we're going to compensate, again, existing employees, new employees, retaining employees in the most cost-effective manner, given this constant kind of push and pull between trying to be competitive as far as public sector pay goes, but also being the very sensitive to what the private sector is paying for in the way of compensation, which is going to be a challenge. But some cities have achieved that, and it allows for much greater certainty and direction for myself and our directors and HR as to what that compensation strategy needs to be going forward.
One of the considerations that we were looking at was the, specifically around the pensions and the total compensation plan, because there's a lot of talk about salary to salary, but the, for instance, from a, just a healthcare perspective, you know, the burdens of healthcare have been increasing for the private sector and the public sector, you know, this is not news to anybody, but the healthcare plans that are currently in place for public sector are far better, have a lot better benefits than the, than the private sector do for comparable costs. So I think that, you know, we need to do the full comparison in order to make sure that, that value of that pension plan, the value of the total benefits package is still in line, so that at least we're looking at apples to apples if possible.
Other questions, comments? All the women, all the men, excuse me, Fruman?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And in light of time, and probably other people wanting to speak, I'll ask one question and make one comment. There could be some interpretation on some of these things, so I'm just wondering what kind of direction we're giving to staff. And for example, the BCPA golf, I'll use those as two examples, it looked like there was a range of things in here, from increasing golf fees and making the BCPA work to selling. It seemed like there was quite a range. So are we going to have further follow-up discussion on the council? Or is this the product that's being given to staff for them to figure out, what do we mean? Do we mean making them work, or do we mean selling them?
I think that the clearance of that question is, the council, we need to discuss that, we need to evaluate it, and we might ask the staff to give us some options, perhaps, on how much money, you know, what would it take to increase golf course fees to cover costs, or, you know, all of the above. And Alderman Sage?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And it's a good question, Jim. I think what perhaps didn't come through as clearly on the PowerPoint is that we saw in the draft recommendation or the draft report that we looked at, is there are specific items that are highlighted as consensus items from the budget task force. And so as it relates to the BCPA, the one for this coming year is around the operational audit. There were other ideas that were expressed, and I think we left those there as reference points, as perhaps some other ideas to spur some additional conversation. But, but again, back to your original question, the consensus items from the budget task force are much more targeted and specific in nature, and we'll make sure that that comes through as it did on the draft report as part of the final report as well.
And Mayor, I guess I'll make this comment, we're going to be talking about the 1% later, but I think one thing that surfaced here in the last few weeks, and I think it's going to become part of our fabric, if you will, in the months ahead, is at point tonight later on the 1% sales tax, the county is asking us to pass a sales tax increase of which a quarter would help fund the mental health. And I get that, and I support it, and I think Bloomington and Normal are the right taxing bodies to pay for that. But if you look at this task force report and our retreat discussions, I think there's a lot of conversation about moving parts, and we're all looking to different governmental groups to help pay for this. So in here tonight, we've got police firing range, we've got school resource officer, we've got a half a dozen things, the airport fire protection, we've got a half a dozen things that we might be looking to the other governmental groups to talk about how, who's the right party to pay for these things. So I think that's going to be a tremendous challenge. Schools, you know, they're in the mix here too, and I think as all our governing bodies, we're going to have to work together and figure out the best way to, to apply the revenue that is necessary for, for these things. I left out connect transit, that's a big player here. So I think this is only the beginning of a lot of discussion about how we share and how we allocate, and who's on first, and who's going to pay for these things. It's got a tremendous challenge. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thanks. And I'd just like to comment with the great work of the task force, we are so much further ahead than we have been in the past. Actually, we never had this kind of information and ideas and options on the table with this great of specificity, as of April 30th, the end of our fiscal year, as we have right now, when, you know, it's still the middle of September. So thank you all very much again for that. Other comments, questions at this point? Alderman Milloumbway?
Thank you. Thank you for the great job that you've done. I have a quick question about the creation of a park district, and just wanted to hear a little bit more about that, and whether or not there was support with other, like the city and the town, and also the county, to go into, you know, this sort of partnership.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you asked that question. I had some interest on that too, because it seemed like it, wouldn't we be just passing the buck? Because you're going to have to pay the same things, and somebody else is going to have, you know, the park district's going to have to raise taxes too.
Sure. So that's one of those ideas that we hear kind of in the background a lot, people throwing out there, and I think it's important that the council speak with a direction to staff on what we want to do. So I would envision at some point that staff would produce a resolution stating that the, you know, we're directing staff to look into what a park district would look like, either, you know, just the city itself, city in town, or a city, town, and county, and then we make the decision on whether or not that's something that we want to look into. I think it would, it's one of those things where, you know, a lot of people will suggest it, and there's never really any forward momentum from anyone, and I think it's clear if we have a resolution from the council, that's the direction that we want to go. And if not, then there's no support for it, and then that would be the end of that conversation.
Alderman Howman?
Yeah, in regard to the park district concept, I think there's some opportunities to, if that did go forward, different kinds of marketing and that kind of thing that could bring even more people into our, into our community to use some of our resources, like Miller Park Zoo, I mean, it's the city zoo, but it really is a regional attraction for us. So there'd possibly be some ways of, of not overlapping with some of the parks and rec programs, that kind of thing, if we combined, if looked at combining those.
Alderman Fruman, did you have?
Just a quick comment, I'd like to echo that, that park district concept. I think we've seen in a lot of our city of Bloomington discussions, we feel like we're providing a lot of services that are regional, regional usage. We might be able to talk about the zoo, BCPA, Coliseum, golf courses, and on down the line. Those are all decisions we made as a city of Bloomington, we didn't make any collaboration with other governmental groups. But now the times are tough, we know that some of that usage is outside of Bloomington, that's why we're subsidizing what we are. So I think whether it's park district, or talking to other governmental groups about helping us, because we are subsidizing a lot of usage, not from city of Bloomington
Alderman Painter?
Well, to speak to that issue, Patty Lynn just sent out a memo speaking to that, and what it says, section 3.2 of 25 ILCS says, prohibition on creating new units of local government until four years after the effective date of this mandatory act of the 99th General Assembly, which was just passed. The General Assembly shall not enact any law creating any new unit of local government, including but not limited to the division of existing units of local government. This section shall not apply to the creation of a new unit of local government from the consolidation of two or more pre-existing units of local government. What that says to me is, yes, we could form a park district, but we would have to form it from two other units of existing local government. Am I wrong about that? Could somebody clarify?
So if, if, we have Angela here?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I have not seen that email, so I will try to whittle my ears. I have to look into that issue more, see if that's something, how it would be divided apart.
Right. I think that would be helpful.
So this is one of those things where, you know, we talked about earlier, how we look at staff time as a resource as well as money, and this is one of those ideas that's out there that's going to require some further study, that's why we had listed it in 2018 and beyond. And I think it's really important that if this is something that the council is interested in, we give a very clear voice to staff to look into it, because it would be kind of futile if there's no council support for such an idea, and staff spends all their time putting together a nice report, and there's no interest in that. So this is one of those issues where I think it's critical that we provide the clear direction, and if it ends up being that we're not interested in even looking at what a park district would be, whether it be for legal reasons or political reasons, then we don't waste staff's time looking into that.
Well, I think it would be a good idea, especially if we could create one with Normal, but I, you know, really don't want to go down that road if we can't do it, so I think we should figure that out.
So the forthcoming resolution, that would be something that we would be looking into at that time.
But the first thing we'll find out from Angela is whether or not that's even possible. If it's not possible, then this is, the discussion's over. If it's possible, then we can circle back and look at the advantages and disadvantages of creating park districts, or any kind of special districts. We have nearly 200 local governments and independent taxing authorities in McLean County already, so those are some things we want to consider. Anyone else? Wow, we're all silent. This is unusual. So, again, I want to thank the task force for all your hard work. This has really been Alderman Sage, Deanna Franchi as co-chairs, and everyone. Really, we're very, very pleased with what you've done. You've given us lots of things to consider, very serious, tough choices for us to make, and your contribution's been invaluable. Deanna, did you want to add?
Yes, I just want to say that I think, I think these are the community people on the town that are saying that we learned a lot, and we learned a lot about what we don't know, and what we still don't know, some of. It's a huge undertaking that the council has, that city staff has, to deal with these issues, and it takes a lot of background, a lot of knowledge, a lot of delving into to decide what it is that you in fact want to do for the citizens. I know a number of people, and I'm sure from the other members of the task force have been asked, as Iowa's, why do you even want to do this? You know you're fulfilling yourself, but you're not. As citizens, I think instead of just saying and complaining that we don't like what's going on, we have a responsibility to look into what is going on, is there anything we can do as a community member, and can we at least have a better understanding of what's going on? And so I think that that has happened here, and I certainly am glad that I served on the task force. I'm also glad that it had a limited timeframe. I don't envy you the council position or the mayor's position, but I'm very glad that we still have citizens who want to serve in these positions.
Thank you. And again, as you hit it on the head, is that there are always things that we want to improve, but rather than to just essentially grous about it, to say, hey, these are some tangible things we can consider that we really can do to make our community a better place to live, work, and play, then tangible things, real ideas that we can grapple with are very, very important for us. Again, I can't thank you all enough for everything. Thank you very much. Actually, I think I deserve one round of applause. Okay, at this point, I wonder if I could have a motion for us to adjourn? Moved by Alderman Howman, is there a second? Second by Alderman Milloumbway, all in favor, say the five by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, our next exciting episode begins in 14 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.[557.95]
What would happen?
If everyone could take their seats, we're starting in one minute. Thank you. They get to speak first? Well, but we don't, it doesn't, I mean, we have, we have plenty. Nobody's gonna be excluded. Actually, yeah, caffeine is usually not my best thing. Thank you, though. Again, if everyone could take their seats, please. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the, uh, special meeting of Bloomington City Council Order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fruin. Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumboy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Here, Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and start with the public comment, and we have, uh, we have thirty minutes budgeted, but there are fewer than, uh, ten people, so everyone will be able to speak. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start, I'm gonna read them, it's kind of three at a time, Alton Franklin, Matt Sorensen, and Judy Sterns.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alton Franklin, I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington. Uh, I'm somewhat of a voracious reader. Uh, I caught on to it when I was a young'un and never quite gave it up. I just dearly loved the written word. And I think it's in part because, or in large part, due to the wisdom that I acquire for some of the things I come across. There was an item that I consider particularly salient for the discussion tonight, that I came across some years back. And so, as much as I hate to read, that's what I'm gonna do. It's, the difference between a good administrator and a bad one is about five heartbeats. Good administrators make immediate choices. Acceptable choices, they can usually be made to work. A bad administrator, on the other hand, hesitates, diddles around, asks for committees for research and reports, eventually he acts in ways which create serious problems. Like a $1.2 million accelerated payment to the IMRS due to pension spiking. I added that part. A bad administrator is more concerned with reports than decisions. He wants the hard record he can display as an excuse for his errors. And good administrators? Well, they depend on verbal orders. They never lie about what they've done if their verbal orders cause problems, and they surround themselves with people able to act wisely on verbal orders. Often, the most important piece of information is that something has gone wrong. Bad administrators hide their mistakes until it's too late to make corrections. Minute of decision. One of the hardest things to find is people who can actually make decisions. Most bureaucracies seek out and promote people who avoid decisions. Folks, we've got a very serious problem. We've got somebody not qualified to be an able-bodied seaman captaining the damn ship. And we're reaping the rewards of that. Something has to give. This travesty that's going on tonight, uh, Terry, love you like a brother, but you hand-pick people who are gonna come out with just what you wanted to hear. And I can think of nothing worse than in the, living in the putrescence of a bunch of yes folks around me. Simply put, we need to look at things realistically, we need to take a look at what our costs are, we need to apportion those out accordingly. To take care of those who can't take care of themselves, and above all else, after that, we need to take care of the citizens and stop ripping the bottom out of their pockets, reaching for their last three cents of change. Thank you.
Matt Sorensen, Judy Sterns, and Gary Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, members of the council. I've got nothing further to add. I know you've got a busy night ahead of you yet, so I will let you get to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Sterns, Gary Lambert, and Donna Boland.
Thank you. I wasn't able to follow up on my last, uh, the last time I was here to comment. Last time, there were too many people, I wasn't one of them chosen to speak. So I'm going to continue on with a subject that I think is critically important. And that is the subject of pensions. It's a hot topic in government. Every government has them to deal with. And the citizens know, the public knows, what a very serious and a very, you know, weighty thing these pensions are. Unfortunately, if the city had funded them when times were good, we wouldn't be looking at what you all are looking at right now, which is funding them and bringing them up to, up to speed. But unfortunately, blame is thrown around, mostly, I hear Springfield a lot, "Oh, State of Illinois has, you know, somehow created this." Then I even heard police and fire somehow have, when, they're of course not even in the IMRF system at all. And certainly, richly deserve the, what we've promised them, and we need to be funding it. But I want to point out again that in 2011, a memo went out, a major, you know, booklet, if you will, all about pensions and how cities were to dole out, um, sick pay when, and vacation buyback, when someone was going to be available, when, gonna be eligible to get the pension. So there is no question, I know there's been questions thrown around on council, "Well, gee, could we have done anything, did we know?" If we didn't know, we weren't doing the most basic of our responsibilities, which is to keep updated on the current laws. And the IMRF takes great pride and wrote this letter to the Tribune about how they educated cities, the president, the executive director of the IMRF. "IMRF continually works to educate participating units of government about how local compensation practices drive costs." Indeed, they did. They sent out memos and they explained the process in depth, and I assure you, that was understood at the City of Bloomington. But somehow, it fell through the cracks, and you're looking tonight at 1.23 million, as you well know, that was just thrown out the window, could've contributed to the police fund, fire fund, anybody's, uh, the Coliseum debt. But it was thrown out the window because someone that you are responsible for did not do their job. So where is, where is your outrage? Where is your concern? Where is even a reasonable admission of this major failing of the City of Bloomington? I haven't heard it. All of you campaigned on fiscal responsibility, every single one of you. Many of you campaigned on watchdog, being a watchdog for the citizens' money. Tonight is your chance. You cannot constantly raise taxes when you're not dealing with the most basic situation of waste. That should come first. Thank you.
Okay. Gary Lambert, Donna Boland, and Karen Zankerly.
Good evening again. I'm sure most of you have heard of a gentleman by the name of Willie Sutton. There may be some in the audience, perhaps some up here, that have not. Willie Sutton was a bank robber. Born in 1801, lived for eighty years. One mafia interview said he made Jesse James and John Dillinger look like Pikers. Over the course of his life, he spent forty years in jail. Escaped three times. After he was released, someone asked him, "Why do you keep robbing banks?" His answer? "That's where the money is." I suggest to you that the city council is where the money is. You have the ability to raise taxes without restriction. That may be an overstatement, I'm not positive. I call, recall one alderman stating or responding to the question, "Why don't we put these out for citizen referendum, binding referendum?" And basically, the response was, "We can't trust them. Only 10% turn out. How can we get a good reading from that?" I would remind each of you, it's those same 10% that elected you. One of the comments that was made by the Budget Committee was they asked that any new taxes be dedicated for a specific source. I would go one step further. As you're pulling out these clauses, road funds, pensions, solid waste, that's leaving your general fund intact. Do not use your general fund, your current revenues, for any new programs and expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Donna Boland, Karen Zankerly, and then Joe Walden.
Hi, I'm Donna Boland, I live in Moore, too. I'm just gonna give kind of a review of things that I found on the city website. It's, this is in the packet. In April of 2014, there were tax increases and 0.25% home rule sales tax was supposed to sunset this year, but instead, the sunset was not voted, or was voted against, and therefore, I feel that that is a tax increase, even though it's not listed as such. The motor fuel tax, 4% per gallon was to go for street resurfacing, the amusement tax, which was 1 million, was to go to general fund. Utility tax, 1.5 million for police and fire pension. The property tax, uh, in 2003 was 0.14% for the library, in 2004, it was 2.15% for police and fire pension. Now, I feel that the cause of some of the structural deficit has to do with the extraordinary expenditures from the general fund. Several of them, one being a $2.4 million write-off for SIAM operational losses, $11 million was added to the budget through budget amendments, which were not, well, that wasn't budgeted, actually. In fiscal year 2016, the budget includes an amendment for the Coliseum with an undetermined amount. The $1.2 million of accelerated payments, even though if they had to be made, it's still a large expense. The motor fuel tax, not all of it was used for road resurfacing. You voted to take half of it out for some other purpose. And as far as economic development goes, tax abatements in Tiff districts and even property purchases all affect the tax base. The two, the fiscal year 2016 tax increases, 20, uh, 0.25 quarter percent is supposed to go to McLean County for mental health and public, uh, safety. And according to their own, um, calculations, that would address 65 people, 10% would be mentally ill, the other are substance abuse, um, people. And according to the newspaper, McLean County is also gonna raise property taxes. And in May, Mr. Wassman came to the, came to the middle, came to the council to request, or solicit, a Tiger grant in order to combine the one vision for the connect transit downtown. And you voted in favor of that. So that-
You're gonna have to wrap up, Donna, sorry.
Okay. That just brings to mind, is it a criminal issue, is it a health issue, or is it a transportation issue? And in my opinion, sales tax, utility tax hurt the poor and businesses, and I don't think it's appropriate to request more money.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Karen Zankerly, Joe Walden, and Joe Teague. Thank you.
Mayor Alderman, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to talk for just a few moments. By the way, I want one of these in my office. I think that would be a very good thing. I'm here about the 1% increase in sales tax, and for me, I'm here as representing the people in our community who are mentally ill, that these dollars would go to help those individuals. Over the years, I, even over the decades, you know, I have watched mental health budgets being slashed to the bone, not only in our area or our state, but across the nation. We've also watched the disasters that spring from mental health services not being able to do as much as they should, when we hear about people, schoolchildren being shot, or people dying in a movie theater. I can tell you that when I hear about, that when I first hear about it, the first word about the shooter, I could finish the rest of the sentence. I could tell you that he was, stayed to himself, that his family was concerned about him, all the markers of mental illness. What could we have saved if we had the resources? So now, it's down to our county, or in that, in City of Bloomington. I've been very happy, been a part of the county's group on mental health and, um, two committees. I served on one for unmet needs. So I know that where money needs to go, and that that money will not exist without a 1% tax, and of course, making that same commitment in Normal. I think that nobody wants to increase taxes. I don't think anybody wants to have tent cities. I don't think one of us wants to see a homeless person frozen on the street. They tend to be the largest group of mentally ill. Only a portion of that tax would go for mental health services, but it would go towards final solutions, ultimately being permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Joe Walden and Joe Teague.
Counsel, hi, you this evening.
Good evening.
Good. Anybody here to talk about flamingos tonight? Anybody here to talk about soccer fields? Okay, I wanna get that straight. Because those people came, did the one-time deal, and they're gone. They're not coming back. Who is coming tonight, counsel? Those people who are saying, "You've got a hole that you keep on digging. Will you please stop digging?" So, stop digging. I don't mind, I can disl- I used to work with mental health people, been there, done that. So I know what a quarter percent will do, but I also know what a quarter percent won't do, because it will not house them. We used to have mental health centers, you know, go to Kankakee, been there. Been, been down south to Southern Illinois, in, in some of the correctional centers, in the mental health centers, been there, done that. Okay, so the inhumane, uh, reasoning, we said, "We can't do that anymore." Now, this is what we have. We have people on the streets, we have people in tent cities, we have people who were shipped from California to Honolulu, Hawaii, because that's how they got rid of their mental health issues. Go out there and take a look. Yes, a quarter percent will do it, but it will not do everything, okay? So let's talk about what can we do? We cannot raise taxes anymore. You are taking it from the people who can least afford the tax. That's the people who live that way and that way. The people who live that way can afford it. So the school cannot afford, they need some money, roads need some money. What you can't do is do what Jim Thompson did with the lottery. He said, "Oh, we'll just take one cent, we'll put it to roads, we'll put it to mental health and everything else, and then take the existing money and take it out the back door and do what you want to do with it, your I.E. wish list," quote-unquote, air quotes. Now, we're also in debt. Okay? Stop digging. We're, this man over here and his administration put us over more, more than $1 million in debt with IMRF-backed penalties. You can't do that. Mr. Hales, how many more skeletons are in the closet? Do we need an audit? I think now we need an audit by somebody not who is consigned by you, not who was a PAC contributor to you, Mr. Mayor, in all fairness, and PAC committees are fine. PACs give money to people all the time, and then all of a sudden, they get contracts. That's been brought out, too. And I really couldn't care less about that, because it's, is part of the political, uh, nature of things. But I think we need an independent auditor. I think before you spend any more money, raise any more taxes, you need to audit that man's books. And if it comes out negative, then Mr. Hales, you either ought to resign, or Mr. Mayor, he ought to be gone. Because I hear that you were instrumental in getting him here. If it is there, you need to be instrumental in moving him out. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on, um, to Joe Teague.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate, uh, being able to address you, and I'm really, really glad that I'm on this side of the microphone. I am a resident of Bloomington. Alderman Fruin allows me to live on his street, so that's a good thing. I've, since being in town twelve years ago, worshiped downtown Bloomington at Second Presbyterian. I've been involved in real estate, nonprofit and civic work, in addition to church work, and I know many of you from being elbow-to-elbow and side-by-side on some really great projects. I think we're in a, in a situation, excuse me, where, think of social and economic triage. There are no easy decisions, there are no no-brainers out there, you all have some very, very difficult decisions to make. And as you've probably heard from time to time, there will be howls from people from perceived and actual winners and losers. You must move on, you must decide. It's not an and/or, I think you've gotta look at and balance quality of life as well as essential services. That's the function of, especially of local government. So I would like you to think of, as you, as you're making your final decisions, is think of preservation of what makes things great in this town. We may not be able to move forward, but I think some enhancement and preservation, uh, is called for. Normally, you would have state, federal, and private resources to really, that you would be augmenting and enhancing. The demographic has changed a little bit, uh, our economic situation's changed a little bit, so you don't have that. So you're, you're now in a position to, to buffer and to protect. Having said that there's no easy decisions, people and organizations specifically here in Bloomington Normal, I'm a come here, so I've really gotten to appreciate that, they are dynamic, but a decision has to be made. Again, knowing that there's no perfect decision, you've gotta move forward, you cannot solve easily an equation that's all variables. So if you all can remove the variable of what council is gonna do, that will, that will help, because we are, we the people are very, very dynamic. We can adjust, we can adapt, but we gotta know what to adjust and adapt to. I think, uh, just my closing would be, take a stand. It's not gonna be easy. Make the decisions, they're hard, you're gonna get some flack, I think you're used to that by now, you're doing pretty well with it. And I firmly believe that we the people, both locally as well as through the state, we will adapt and we will move forward, but please make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks. All right. We're gonna move on to item consideration and action on amending the ordinance on Chapter 39, Taxation, Section 130, to increase home rule sales tax and designate the disposition of the increase. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, Patty Lynn-Sulla, and after that, I will entertain a motion for purposes to begin discussion.
Patty, you've just been promoted.
What did I say?
Patty Lynn, the city manager.
Oh, I thought I said city manager, Ann. Oh, I-
But we'll, we'll hear from-
She thought I said Ann.
We'll hear from Patty Lynn, the finance director, in just a minute. Let me just make a few quick comments, as you're city manager, at least for a short while. Mayor Alderman, tonight, I'm asking you to give careful consideration to and approve an ordinance that will increase the City of Bloomington home rule sales tax from 7.75% to 8.75%, which is a penny increase on every $1 spent on specified goods. As city manager, I do not take lightly any option to increase the tax burden on our citizens. That being said, there is a critical need for additional revenue if we want to continue to provide quality services, including, uh, police and fire, public works, planning, code enforcement, and many other necessary services that our city stakeholders have come to enjoy and to expect from their city organization. Please remember that as a city of, that the City of Bloomington is a major service provider. These services are provided by a large group of dedicated, committed, and passionate employees. Unfortunately, over the last few years, these employees have seen their resources diminish, and they cannot continue to provide high-quality services consistently without additional resources. And as I talk about resources, I mean not only manpower, but equipment, facilities, and everything else that goes into providing the services which we have come to expect. and everything else that goes into providing the services which we have come to expect. Adopting the proposed sales tax increase will, in part, provide our city employees with added resources which will, in turn, allow them to achieve a work-life balance that has been seriously eroded in recent years. I want to just also, before turning to Patty, just reiterate that our recommendation tonight on that 1% splits the 1% into a quarter percent being earmarked for mental health, a quarter percent being earmarked for street resurfacing, which really was not a topic addressed by the Budget Task Force, and the other half percent would be earmarked for fiscal year 17 structural deficit, as recommended by the Budget Task Force. Let me now turn to Patty Lynn-Silver, our finance director, to just show you a few slides, just to remind us all of why this sales tax increase is needed in our general fund. Patty Lynn, if you'd go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, David, and counsel, and I am thankful I'm the finance director, not the city manager. Most of you have seen these slides before, I just have three slides. I just want to remind people, and for those who may have been coming out for the first time tonight or listening for the first time, that, you know, the proposal is, as David stated, it would potentially generate $9.6 million a year. 25% is proposed to go annually to McPain County Mental Health, another 25% to street resurfacing and sidewalks, and 50% into general fund operations. To clarify our general fund operations, I know I beat this to death, and you guys are very clear on this, but our projected general fund deficit for fiscal '17 is about $7.4 million, and the genesis for the Budget Task Force that was created, I would like to say it's been a privilege working with them, and they worked very hard, and I was glad to see the dialogue for the budget going on year-round. I would love that all year-round, but, $7.4 million. We've had some positive news on our pension, as you know, which takes our deficit down, actually. 800,000, solid waste gap is still part of the dialogue, and so if you were to address that, and 50 cents per dollar earned would go to the general fund. We'd still have a small deficit in '17, but you can see that as our general fund grows, we continue to have issues. So it takes us a long way, the 50 cents, but it doesn't completely get you there, but we really need it. Quickly, if we were not to address the solid waste gap, or to agree to continue that subsidy from the general fund, you can see that that deficit, what it would really look like. So I just wanted to kind of give you the big, broad picture of why we need, why we need these funds for general operations. I commend you for taking this up, and it's not easy, but we do need to pay our bills. And this goes a long way in getting us there, so, thank you.
Or are you, any questions real?
Mayor, if I could just, I think it's important also to point out that, as we've heard from many other agencies, you know, about, they're struggling, too. And we're all being impacted by the state of Illinois and the General Assembly. We still risk the possible loss of some of that revenue we've come to rely on. But I think it's important to point out that we, first and foremost, have some significant needs internally, structurally, in our operating budget, and as you know, in our capital, that is critical to be addressed first, so that we can be healthy financially and have a sustainable budget going forward, so that we can also be a great collaborator and a great partner with all the other agencies that, in working together, make this a great community to live, work, learn, and play in. So with that, Mayor, turn the time back to you and the counsel.
At this point, I would, before we begin our discussion, or, no questions, I'm sorry. No questions, just a comment. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to amend the ordinance as presented to Chapter 39?
I'd like, may I ask a question first, Mayor?
Sure.
I sent an email earlier this afternoon asking about the possibility of having some conversation about splitting out, in effect, having two votes, one on the 0.25% for the expansion of the county mental health services, and then one related to the proposed, then, additional 0.75% for the city.
I didn't see the email, but at this point, I'm going to ask for, see if there's an ordinance as presented, and then they can be amended afterwards. Is there a motion to propose this as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, to put it on the table.
Moved by Alderman-Hellman, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman-Painer. Okay. And then we can begin the discussion and go forward.
Well, again, I'm just asking about having some time to have some conversation about that. I think I indicated last week, I think I've said in my conversations with county personnel, I am committed to the 0.25%. I do have some other questions and/or concerns about the remaining 0.75%, and I'd like the opportunity, if the council sees fit, to be able to come alongside and vote and support mental health services that the county has proposed. But that's going to be probably impossible for me to do if everything is linked together and I don't have the opportunity to have some conversation and have some questions answered and make some comments about the remaining 0.75%. I don't want to be put in that position. That's why I'm asking if there's any, if there is some latitude and accommodation in terms of being able to be supportive of the mental health service aspect of the tax increase, but then allow room for additional conversation and a second vote on the 0.75%.
My, again, the council can certainly do what it would propose. As I said, when I formed the Budget Task Force, regardless of whether the stuff I liked or didn't like, that I would go with things that were consistent, wouldn't try to pick it apart, or go for the things that are the easy votes and not the hard votes. So, again, it's certainly up to the council, and we could certainly have, you know, a substitute motion on that, but at this point, this is, it's not exactly to the letter of the Budget Task Force, but it is consistent with the one penny. It actually gives the city less than the Budget Task Force has suggested. The Budget Task Force said a penny, and then some things earmarked. Only a half penny, as presented, would go to the city's services. A quarter would go to street resurfacing and sidewalks, a quarter would go to county mental health, as it's presented. So it is consistent with, it's not inconsistent with that, so that would be my take on it. Again, I know that there's certainly an opportunity here to talk about this, you know, as we have, there's nothing new on this, but that would be where I'm coming from. Obviously, we have a motion on the floor, if you want to make a substitute motion to split that, or to, let's see, Angela, how would we do that, if Alderman Sage wanted to make a substitute motion, to vote only on?
I think Jeff Jurgens has provided some text related to that, but if you could perhaps explain that, Angela.
Clarify for us in the public.
Yeah, I believe he responded today, said, "As to splitting the vote on increases, the Department of Revenue is very particular as the ordinance language that is required that must be filed." So he would have to do a motion to substitute, then we would have to look at the necessary language that would have to be put in the ordinance. I would recommend it being all in one ordinance, not into separate, different ordinances on the various increases. He said that the provision that requires 0.25% of the increase to go to the county is actually in a separate section of the city code, apart from the tax rate. If there's a desire to only increase the sales tax by 0.25% and provide the full increase to the county, then a motion could be made to amend the ordinance to set the rate at 1.75% and then give the county 100% of the net proceeds collected from the increase. That said, whatever the amount of the increase, he would recommend, upon his research, that it be in one ordinance and as defined by the Department of Revenue.
Well, I'll tell you, what we can do is, I think, if we, if this does not pass...
Then you could do a motion to amend.
Then we can have a separate motion to only do the quarter or a half, or whatever.
Whatever rate you want.
Especially the quarter, because it's a separate section, it would go specifically to the county.
That's correct. That would be the best.
And that was what Jeff recommended. I guess there was an email, I didn't get a chance to see this, this is kind of 11th hour for me.
Yes, it was about 4:30.
Well, and I recognize that. I think I will go ahead, and just for the purposes of then procedure, I will offer a substitute amendment at this point, so that there's an opportunity for us or for me to continue to have this conversation a little bit. Angela, don't go away. So Angela, if I was to offer a substitute amendment, and was to word it such that it read something like this, I would propose an increase in the sales tax by 2.5%, and to provide that full increase to the county, to amend the ordinance so that the rate is at 1.75% and stipulating that the county gets 100% net proceeds collected from the increase, is that an acceptable substitute motion?
Yeah, after you do, I would take a vote on the current motion, then he could do a substitute to amend the ordinance, and then we would have to look at the necessary language, amend it before the mayor could write, assign it.
So we would debate and pass the main motion, and then?
No, if it didn't, if that's, if it fails, correct.
Oh, it failed, I see. And then if that failed, then we would do the substitute motion.
Correct.
And that's, that's what, again, was the purpose of my email this afternoon, to ask that before any official action be taken, could we talk about this a little bit as a council? That however, didn't happen, and so now, it seems like we have to vote on the motion that's been moved and seconded.
Been moved and seconded at this particular time.
We can discuss.
Yeah.
If it were, if it failed, then we could come back to it, but so we certainly can discuss, I mean, anything, anything that's relevant to this.
Right, that's true, you can make changes, right now, you're at the discussion point.
Anything that's relevant to this can be discussed, absolutely.
Okay. I'll make, I'll make some comments then, as part of the consideration of the full 1%, but I'll defer and look to hear from some other aldermen.
Okay. Alderman-Fruin.
Well, Dave, I think that's a good start, and as I kind of weighed on this over the last few days, what I came up with was a realization that I think nine, 10, or 11 of us would draw this differently. And we all want to be earmarked in different fashions. It's too bad we can't work our way up, because I think we probably have a consensus, or a majority, or a unanimous opinion for mental health. It'd be nice to work our way up. Just my opinion, I've said this publicly and to the council members, street resurfacing seems like a no-brainer to me as well. So now I'm working my way up. And I think once we get to that last top of the list, that's where we find our differences. And as I've done on other votes, I think at some point, you have to compromise, you have to accept some variation of what you would prefer. I would love to have some money in here for connect transit. I think when we talk about helping people, we're going to help the mentally ill, those that need it, and we're going to, connect transit, in my way, would help people be employed, get to and from work. And I think that's critical to our community. And the list goes on, and every one of us can draw the list. But I guess what I've concluded, unless change in the next few minutes, is you have to agree on something, and this came to us during the 11th hour, we haven't had a lot of time to discuss it as a group. It is what it is, it's not going to do us any value to talk about the last 30 or 60 days. And so with that said, unless, I would change the next few minutes, I'm going to accept what's given to us, even though I would draw it differently.
And just so that, just so we can clear, we're not blaming this on the county. The accelerated timetable that had our colleagues to the north act on this is because of the timetable of the county's fiscal year, which begins shortly. Well, we have to get the documents in by October 1st, or September 30th, to the Department of Revenue, to begin to accommodate the county's fiscal year, which begins January 1st. Alderman-Hellman, and then Black.
I'm the ass.
Oh, you're, oh, I was just going to go left or right here.
Unclick ourselves.
Unclick yourselves? Oh, okay. So, all right, Alderman-Lamboi, then, why am I missing?
We're going to go left or right.
I'm missing.
Yeah, we unclick.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I was getting people out of turn. Alderman-Hellman, go ahead, you have the floor, and then we'll go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm certainly okay with the 25% for mental health and for the 25% for streets. And although I anticipate voting for this 1%, I do have concerns that that last 50% goes to the general fund without any specifics. I'm uncomfortable with that. I know it's early in the budget process, but I just feel like, I'm just uncomfortable with not knowing specifically where that'll be earmarked.
All right. Alderman-Black, and then we'll go.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this one, we've talked about at length in various venues, and this has been kind of a long community conversation about a lot of different topics. And to me, I'm in favor of keeping it as one whole package, namely because I think there are really critical things here that we all can, we all agree on in some form or another. And a lot of folks have been asking my take on where, what the council's going to do today, and I've stopped looking at my crystal ball because it's never been right. But I would suggest that, I think that there's a lot of groups of three and a lot of groups of four up here of what this revenue could be used for. You know, I've heard a lot of things thrown around, I've heard the schools thrown around, I've heard connect transit thrown around, you know, economic development thrown around, and to me, you know, I'm with Diana, that general fund operations isn't as specific as I would like it to be. I'd love to have, you know, I've talked about for what I think it should go towards. But from my perspective, you know, we've all come at this at a different approach, and I think Judy pointed it out, that we all ran on fiscal responsibility, and I think everybody here is trying to be fiscally responsible. But from my perspective is that we see all these presentations about what does the future of the city's fiscal life look like? We've seen charts, we've seen graphs, we've seen projections, we've seen lots of things. And this council has never had a stomach for the major cuts that we would need to make. It's just never happened. And we talk about, you know, we're interested in having efficiencies. Efficiencies only get us so far. You know, I'd be very interested to have a discussion about major gutting the BCPA or gutting the Coliseum, but our hands are tied in a lot of these things, and I think we all can have a general understanding that that is the case. So we have limited options. So it's hard for me to get behind a proposal where it's all kind of parsed out, and, you know, you can take the high road on, you know, mental health, I don't think any reasonable person can disagree with that. I think everyone can agree that street resurfacing is good, I'd love to see it go towards a bond, street, sidewalk, sewers, the whole shot. I think we can get a lot of bang for our buck with that. And general fund operations, yeah, I'd like to be more specific, but I think we all know that there's key needs that we can have, that we can move that revenue towards. And I never want to be that alderman that gets up here and says, "I support X, Y, and Z project," but then when the time comes where I have to put money behind what I'm saying, I don't do it. That, to me, is fiscally irresponsible, and that's how I've gotten some of the messes that we have today. And so as we move forward, we can talk about what types of resolutions, you know, what groups can we benefit here, you know, like, again, I've talked about economic development, connect transit on my perspective, but I, keeping it together, to me, is, we have to take what we have in front of us. And the facts are very clear that we have a structural deficit over the long term, this is a way to address it. Unless someone's coming to me with major, a proposal for major cuts and gutting major programs that we don't like to touch, you know, Mamoka and I were talking earlier about when, two years ago, we were talking about cutting the Zumba program, and the pushback we got about from people who didn't want us to get rid of Zumba. There really isn't a tolerance up here for those kind of cuts, and that's a very small program. And we're talking about major, major differences in what we're offering today, and I'm not willing to, I don't see any proposals for that, I'd have that conversation, but this is what I have in front of me, and I want to put my money where my mouth is, and so that's my support.
Again, just to clarify, the only thing in Normal's ordinance that was specified from the penny is a quarter for mental health. They have asked us, they have set different priorities about soccer, or connect transit, or whatever. But just to clarify, if we don't do anything about anything else, like our solid waste fund, or whatever, which is also tough, we're still going to have almost a $2 million structural deficit this year, regardless of whether we do anything with connect transit or anything else. Just to make it clear, we're talking about, then, next year, 3.3 million, almost 5 million by structural, by, excuse me, as our structural deficit by 2019. Our costs are going up over 2% a year, and our revenues are flat. There aren't any free lunches. That's pretty much the situation. I mean, we've all known that. So, and we're not talking about just the Zumba program. I mean, certainly, if we don't do something, it's not just one of the Budget Task Force recommendations, the BCPA is clearly gone. We're going to have to, you know, lay off, actually, we can call them layoff, we're going to have to fire large numbers of people in the city. It might be as little as 75, it might be more like 100. If we're not going to pay for our programs, we've got to figure out who's going, right? One way or another, we've got to make the tough decisions. I don't like to pay taxes either, just to give you one idea. The mayor's salary, I'm not asking for any increase, it hasn't gone up in a generation and some, when I pay my taxes, the federal government and state, I don't have enough money for my entire year's mayor's salary to pay for my property taxes. And I've had a salary, the only one that's been flat for seven years, two 1% increases, okay? I feel it like anybody else, to suggesting that I'm... I feel it like anybody else, to suggest that I'm not a taxpayer, that I don't feel it with two kids and college is ridiculous. We've got to step up to the plate, we may not like it, this is preferable to a cut and gut, which would, what we'd have to do, you wouldn't recognize the Bloomington that you know and love today, period. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I'm sorry, Alderman Schmidt, that was on the heels of you, Scott.
Thank you. And Mayor, I recognize that we really have these needs. I have some questions that I'd like to get some pretty clear answers to. One of them has to do with 0.25 for street resurfacing. I've been told a couple of different things. I've been told that it's only going for street resurfacing and sidewalks, and then you and I talked, and you were saying, "No, we can use that for infrastructure, sewers, sewer lines, water lines." If we're not using it for what's underneath the street, then I think that's a terrible message to everybody who lives in an older part of town, who could not have their streets resurfaced because they couldn't, you know, we wouldn't resurface them and then tear them up later.
I couldn't agree more, and just to, Alderman, or excuse me, Alderman Melwambe, when we had the $10 million street resurfacing, did actually, when we actually floated the bond, make it clear that we could also use it for sewers, because otherwise there'd be some areas with aging sewers that would not be eligible.
That was a major issue for me then.
And I think that is, I couldn't agree more, you know, but again, that would be at the time where you'd actually issue a bond, that's when, assuming that's what it went for.
So, is this, is this an assurance that that's going to happen? Because that's really important to me.
I think that it's critical for the west side or any side to be at the plate.
It's all of the older parts of town.
Right, yeah. And we would, that, we might have, we've got, obviously sewer needs that would go beyond those that are attached to street resurfacing.
And I understand we're doing a stormwater and sewer rate study.
Exactly.
And that's separate, but that may come back behind and support money for whole street relations.
Absolutely, and I think I've circled back and chatted with people, if we were, if this passes, and if we do a street resurfacing bond, it would be absolutely clearly specified, because otherwise it would be a major disadvantage to, structural disadvantage to our west side, absolutely.
Downtown, I mean, where we're sitting.
And downtown. And even some older neighborhoods in Ameliaus Ward.
I want to echo what Diana Howman said about the 50% just going into our general fund without any specific conversation about what that's going to pay for, and as Alderman Black said, we have not exhibited the history of having the stomach to make the kinds of changes that we probably need to make, and not just us, but municipal government in general. I think, you know, we're at a place where we probably need to look long and hard at what our, what our job is in this community. And I'm interested in Alderman Sage's proposal to have a conversation about 75% of this 1%, because, you know, I really appreciate the Budget Task Force saying, "Here are some actionable items, and here's the process that you're going to have to vote up or down on each one of them." But we've had this for seven days, and we have not had any conversation amongst ourselves about what that general fund revenue is going to go for. We also are looking at, you know, some portion of a property tax increase. We also have our user fee study coming in, and we don't know what that's going to bring in, and that underscores the major recommendation from the Budget Task Force that we, that those who use services pay for the services, so, you know, that's a kind of guiding principle. It feels to me as though, just as a council, we have not had a chance to do the heavy lifting and to really hold our own feet to the fire. And again, I understand we need this money, but it really does bother me that we've had this for seven days and no conversation, and I don't know what to do with that, so I just put that out there.
I thought we've had it for several weeks, and I thought we'd been discussing this for a while.
We have not had a conversation about the sales tax. We heard it last week, right? Am I right? We heard it last week. And, you know, our sister city to the north has had this for, as far as I can tell, three or four months, and have gotten their hands around what they want to do. We have not had that chance, and it bothers me. So, you know, and again, I understand we need the money, and it's just making it difficult because we haven't had those conversations.
I think we've been getting regular funding, or information on funding from Patty Lynn in the Finance Department, I think it's pretty clear, I mean, it's going, most of the money's going for public safety and the drivers of our structural deficit, at least that information I think went out last week.
So, well, we know where the deficits are, but we haven't had the conversation amongst ourselves about, you know, is that where we want the money to align? You know, one of the, one of the slides, I don't want to pick on parts of...
We're not allocating it in the general fund, it's going into the general fund that are, that still will have a multimillion dollar deficit, right?
That's my point. My point is that we're putting it into the general fund, and are we, or when are we going to have the conversation about how we're shoring up our general fund? Where is that money going? Are we just simply saying the structure that we have is the structure we're going to live with, and we're not going to make any difficulty?
Well, we allocate that during the budget process, and we still need, obviously, we still need many millions more.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, keep going around. Alderman Painter, and Burgess, and Melwambe.
Okay. Well, thank you, Karen. I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate your points. However, in the year and a half, which is a short time that I've been on the council, it seems to me that everything's always at the 11th hour. That's kind of become the timetable that I think I have to work under. So, I'm willing to move on with this, and I think we got here by kicking the can down the road over and over again, and we really can't continue that. I think that we need to earmark what we spend it for in the general fund. I don't have a problem with what Patty Lynn has laid out. One fifth would go for fire, one fifth for police and communications, one fifth for street maintenance, one fifth for park maintenance, and one fifth for fleet management. I know that people are really upset when we raise taxes. I think we've all been taxed to death in Illinois. I personally don't like paying taxes. I mean, I don't get a pension, my husband's retired, we're on a fixed income, but I also realize that we have to do something to keep going. Otherwise, if this continues and our debt grows, then eventually, and maybe it'll be 10 years, maybe 20, we'll have to become insolvent. And when I looked up and saw what happens when a municipality in Illinois becomes insolvent, it's really scary, because the state comes in, they seize all our assets, which we really don't have any, unless they take the animals in the zoo, which they'd have to care for, so I think that's moot. And then they impose their own economic development plan onto us, which most surely involves raising all taxes to the highest legal limit, and then they figure out what we're going to do to expand our economic development. And from what I've seen, I don't think our state legislature can arrange a one-car funeral. So, the thought of them taking care of Bloomington really frightens me. And maybe that's just all gloom and doom for me, but I think that we need to move on taking care of our house. And I know people have said, "Oh, well, that's a 100% increase, that's a 66% increase, it's a 60% increase, it's a 13% increase, and it's one penny on the dollar." And so, if you spend $100, that would be, what, $10 extra?
A buck.
A buck, okay.
No, $1.
So, you know...
Don't make me work.
Sorry, sorry.
Where's the calculator when you need one?
I've been thinking about math way too much. Is this a regressive tax? Yeah, it is, but you can argue that all taxes are regressive. Everyone doesn't like it, but it's something that we have to do. And I really, I understand that people don't trust where we're going to put this money, but we need to earmark it, and we need to spend it on things that we need. And that's my feeling, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burgess, Melwambe, and Sage.
Well, I think in making this decision, we can't let ourselves be hindered by the mistakes that have been made in the past, and we certainly can't let it be hindered or hesitate because of the fear that we might make mistakes in the future. We need to make a decision this evening, and I'd like to offer my perspective as a person who was on the Budget Task Force this summer, and of course, this is my perspective of the task force's work, and if I don't, if I'm not accurately representing it, I know that Scott or David will hop in and give their own perspective. But the reality is, when we're talking about this portion that the Budget Task Force has been recommended that we raise the sales tax in order to go to the general fund, what we are talking about it going to, and the reason that we have to do it is because we do not have a sustainable budget. That means that come next fiscal year, if we do not take action this evening, we cannot pay our bills, and we cannot make payroll. That is a huge problem for us. So, when we're talking about dedicating a certain portion of this towards the general fund, we're looking at things like paying bills and payroll. And as for specific allocations and exactly where that money's going to go, I understand the concern about wanting to have all that upfront and that decision having been made, but at the end of the day, that decision is ours, and we can't let ourselves be held back by the fear that we'll make the wrong decision when it is time to pass the budget. Because what my understanding of the task force's reasoning, and I agree with this, is that we don't have a sustainable budget for FY17, and unless we dramatically decrease the amount of services that we currently provide, and when I talk about services, I'm saying not just, you know, the amenities that we think of, I'm talking about police and fire, infrastructure, public safety, all those things that are incredibly important to our community, because otherwise, we're going to be looking at laying off huge numbers of people to make that $7 million deficit. So, what the Budget Task Force has recommended, at least through my view, is saying, "We can't quickly and easily fix the fact we don't have a sustainable budget. It's going to take us some time," and we have some wonderful suggestions that have come out of both the Budget Task Force, as well as our recent council retreat, on areas that we need to examine, to look at. So, we change the nature and the structure of our budget so we can be sustainable. And when I say sustainable, what I mean is, we need to figure out a way so that our costs are increasing at roughly the same rate as our revenues. Right now, they are not. Our costs for some portion, for some significant period of time, have been outpacing our revenues, and that is not a sustainable model, it's really not an acceptable model, and we need to change that, but it won't happen overnight. So, what this does, this half cent increase for the general fund, it gives us the time to maintain our current level of services while we take a rational, controlled, responsible approach to creating that sustainable budget, so that when we move forward, we will have a comprehensive city plan and a comprehensive way of providing services in the city that don't undermine any single area. So, from my perspective, we have to do this. We may not want to do this, and no one wants to raise taxes, but it is where we are, because we will not be able to fix the problems that we currently have in the budget in the short timeframe we have, and that is not the result of anyone else's timeline but our own, but our own fiscal years and our inability to change quickly and easily. So, I do support the entire one cent, and I think it is the only responsible action we can take at this point, given our current circumstances.
Alderman Melwambe, Sage, and Lauer.
Thank you. This is fun. I, you know, I've been asked a number of times, you know, how I would vote, you know, when I come to council meetings, and I usually say, "Hmm, I don't know, I like to wait and listen until the very end," because I always hear a number of different arguments that could sway me one way or another. But I have to say, at the moment, you know, I think it's pretty safe to say that we all have consensus around mental health. As far as street resurfacing as well, I, that is something, and sewers, that is something, and sidewalks, that's something that I am very much in support of. I think, you know, last week's presentation by Jim Karsh really, you know, put that perspective in front of me, and when we do have, we have streets where we have cave-ins, you know, that is not what I think about as a model, modern city. This is something that you would expect in third world countries. So, I'm very much, and it's something that I'm, you know, I think that just needs to be done, the needs are just too great, and it's something that we, you know, I'm okay increasing taxes for that reason. And I know a couple of the council members have stolen my thunder, you know, when it comes to the other 50%. I'm still unsure, you know, just like they are, as to where that's going to go, and I think, you know, we have to understand the public's trepidation when it comes to that, especially given that we're suggesting such an increase. And what made that clearer for me is the Budget Task Force presentation. As I looked at it, I saw that there is a potential of an increase of quite a few fees, and that, I think, you know, when in terms, in terms of increasing fees and taxes, it's something that I always try to take a measured approach. So, I, in my opinion, the other 50% at this moment feels a little bit premature. I'd like to see, you know, where we go with those recommendations, because I certainly do not like to increase everything at the same time. I really believe in giving people an opportunity to adjust to some of the increases that we're thinking about. Okay, I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Renner stepped out for a moment, so Alderman Sage.
Sure. Thank you. One of the things that will impact my vote here in a few minutes will be, and I've heard it again, and Scott reminded me again, if we were unwilling to be able to push back on Zumba classes, then I'm struggling with feeling a high level of confidence that we're going to be able to make any cuts in the FY17 budget. And so, what I need to hear, what's going to help me making and voting is, is I need to hear definitively from the council that we are committed to making FY17 cuts. And that was a rhetorical question, I'll come back and ask that again, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, right? A few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I had a conversation with a task force colleague, and I told this person, I said, "You know, I have concluded that we cannot cut our way out of this, right? So, some measure of tax increase will be needed." And I think I used a phrase when I was having that conversation with him, it was kind of uncharted territory for me to even start to have that conversation. So, I feel like I need to say that this is not about saying I'm not in favor of potentially a tax increase. My concern is, is the delinking of a vote on cuts and a vote on revenues. That's my concern. And we keep talking about that we're, we're here at the 11th hour, and as the mayor says, and rightfully so, this is not due to our partners from the county, right? This is not, this is not an 11th hour that we've made, right? This is the 11th hour that Normal has made for us. And so, while I do believe that it's important to work with Normal, I also recognize I don't work for Normal, right? I work for Bloomington, and I think it's important that we have the opportunity to have a full conversation. We do have, as I understand it, we do have another opportunity to raise the sales tax, I think before, in advance of the FY17 budget. That gives us an opportunity to have a full and complete conversation about, as Karen suggested, how much potential revenue is going to come in as our licenses and fees are revised and adjusted as they should have been. What's going to be the additional tax burden as our water and/or sewer rate studies come forward? We do not have a fully complete picture of what the potential revenues are going to be, and especially what the cuts are going to be, and why is that important? We get credibility, we gain credibility, in my opinion, when we can demonstrate that we're looking at all of those, and we're not. We're talked, we've talked about some potential cuts tonight, we will be bringing those back as part of resolutions for votes by the council. By the time those come back, the vote on the sales tax will be in the rearview mirror, that will be done. It will not be part of a, what I think is a legitimate package, a... It will not be part of what I think is a legitimate package, a full and robust conversation about both cuts and potential increases. I do share some of the concerns, and we talked about this at the Budget Task Force, where money is just disappearing into the general fund without saying here clearly tonight, what are, what are the specific expenses that these are going to be built on? I mean, I just heard, you know, Karen ask a question. We're not even sure we have a clear understanding, and maybe we cleared it up some tonight, but what the 25 percent is supposed to go towards infrastructure, what does that involve? We have time to have those conversations and make sure we have that full level of understanding. This eleventh hour is not of our own making. I think, again, it's important for us to be, if we want to consider ourselves to be authentic and have credibility, it's important for us to look at the total package. And so, again, I'll go back to the question that I asked, because this will impact my vote. If I definitively hear that this council will make cuts in the FY seventeen budget, that's going to impact how I vote. And so I would appreciate, maybe after Kevin is done, maybe just some additional, at the mayor's discretion, maybe some additional time for some council conversation around that question. I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We'll definitely have that.
David, I think you can be very well assured that I am here to make cuts. I'm the cutting gut guy. Nobody else has the stomach to do it, and I'm here to do that. And if I'm voted out next time, vote me out. But that's what my constituents are asking. This tax is extremely regressive, and that does mean something in South Hill. It may not mean anything in your neighborhood, but it means that we are becoming a city in which many of our citizens may not be able to continue to live. And that's not acceptable to me. Not when we're expanding the zoo, expanding the library, working on a very expensive downtown lighting plan, looking at expanding parking for downtown, installing bike paths, we've got an expansion to the Constitution Trail. Just last week, we approved a bridge, which we need, going across Linden. Linden needs some attention, there's no question about that. But 30 percent expanded, another $300,000, because we might expand Constitution Trail underneath that bridge in the next 30 years. That is not a need right now. Sorry. I'm not here to beat you guys up, but I have voted against things for two years, and I'm scoffed at. And now, here we are, okay? So it's time to pay the piper. Again, we've got a very, very nice Parks and Recreation Department, and people really enjoy it. But you know what? Maybe they should be paying for those things that they're using, okay? There are many, many people that are just barely able, or maybe not even able, to afford to continue to live in the homes that they've got. They can't afford the paint on the front porch. Half the time, they aren't eating, okay? That's not acceptable. We've bought property, okay? We've got property that we should divest ourselves of and make it produce income. We've got the cart before the horse here. And I'm sorry, I hate to criticize other bodies of government, but I think the entire state, and I'm not sure that the United States hasn't got things upside down. We need to make cuts right now and reinvest in building jobs and building and growing our economy, okay? These amenities are very nice, and yes, they'll attract people if anybody would come, but how are we going to entice them to come with our expense from Indiana, or from Iowa, or from Wisconsin? Let's get a grip. Let's maintain what we've got. I don't want to close our zoo down, but it is not a need. Folks, it's not. I'm sorry. We don't have to have that zoo to provide an environment which people can survive and maintain their own households. This, we've got to prioritize. We've got a number of things that we're paying for, that we've been paying for for years, that we've got to cut back on. We are losing Mitsubishi, that's a major employer, okay? We've lost a number of people at State Farm, we've lost our externals, we're going to lose some more. I can see it, I can feel it in Ward One. I know you can feel it if you look. I know you can see it. This is a time where we've got to become more conservative, and I know I'm the conservative guy and I'm the bad guy, but you know what? It's time you look through my eyes a little bit here. If things were rocking along really good and we were growing, I wouldn't have a case. But I've got a heck of a case here. We've got to make cuts. And adding to the tax burden right now, I don't think is acceptable. One thing that I could stomach, and I think most people could deal with, is repealing the 25.25 percent sales tax that we initiated, I believe, back in 2009, and correct me if I'm wrong, for the BCPA, and then worry about how we're going to deal with the BCPA from there on, okay? We'll take that tax and we'll put it towards the mental health, where it probably should belong, okay? Times have changed. By increasing additional taxation now on the entire county, we're going to increase the number of people that have got problems with mental health, because they're going to be dealing with the stress of the additional taxation and additional expense, just to maintain what they've got. I don't know how much I can do. I can sit here and talk myself blue in the face, but it's very simple. We have gone down this road, expanding our government, before we have allowed our economy to grow. In order to have a sustainable government, you have to have a sustainable economy. We're not in a sustainable economy right now, and that's the issue. That's looking at it from a community's macroeconomic look at 100,000 feet, if you want to look at it like that, or 30,000, or whatever you want to, wherever you want to sit, okay? It's just really basic. We cannot continue to expand our government and provide all of these nice amenities without an expanding and growing economy. The folks can't continue to pay for all these things. It's as simple as that. Thanks.
Well, I think the one, I think the one thing that we can agree on is that cuts are inevitable, right? I mean, as Patty Lynn is suggesting to us, right? If we don't do anything, this is only part of the piece, I think, as Alderman Sage has suggested. This year alone, we're still down 1.8 million, right? Next year, 3.3, 4.8, 8 million in three years. We're going to have to change things. Now, just to also put it in perspective, we have $7.4 million is our structural deficit this year. We would have to shut down all of Parks and Recreation, and absolutely everything having to do with Parks and Recreation is roughly $7 million is how much we spend. And then next year, we'd still be back with a structural deficit, because our costs would go up. So, again, we do have to make these kinds of choices, and these are the types of things. But as I recall, Alderman Sage wanted to make sure that everybody, I think, committed to the Budget Task Forces, many of their cuts, and if I'm not mistaken...
Yeah, and Mayor, I mean, I appreciate, I don't have a right to ask that, but I feel like that it's important enough for me and impacts my vote enough that, I feel like we need to definitively say, we're going to make cuts in the FY seventeen budget. Again, this is not the best way to do it, right? We should be looking at everything together, cuts and revenues, on our timeline, but it is what it is at this point. So what I'm trying to do is gauge commitment, I mean, public commitment, on our, having a leadership courage to do that as we start developing the FY seventeen budget. I would appreciate...
I don't think that it's an unfair thing at all. I think, and if someone feels like they would prefer, at this point, you know, not to comment publicly, I think that's their right as well, but I think it's not an unfair thing to suggest. And, let's see, Alderwoman Burgess and Howman, and then I'll go around.
You can go ahead and go around.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Mayor. I think, second time through, we'll all try to make some shorter conversation, but as I've listened to this conversation, what I've heard is a lot of, I think, consistency. I don't think there's anybody up here that doesn't want to look at the other side of the equation in expense management. I think what bothers us tonight is the fact, we're in a silo tonight, we're in isolation, we're talking about one issue, and whether you want to call it the eleventh hour or the last seven days, we haven't had a council discussion on point. We haven't had that council discussion of how we're going to balance this with fees, with other revenue situations, and we haven't had a council discussion of what it is that we are going to spend our time with, with expense management. You know, I went first, and I said, I'm going to support the team. Please know, and others have told us when they came up to the microphone, we don't have an easy job here. And I'm bothered by a lot of things. One thing I didn't mention earlier is, you know, all of a sudden, we're going to be paying over 10 percent for food and drink. When we leave the Coliseum, we go to Rosie's. When we leave BCPA, we go to Luca Grill. That food and drink bill is more than 10 percent. We are really impacting small business. I use that as one example, but I think we need to take this isolation tonight and make sure we take that into account when we make the next decision and the next decision, because we can't keep piling on the small business. So I'll make that comment. But I'll just say, this is the beginning of a lot of unpleasant conversation, so we better buckle in, because the Zumba class was a great example. We've got to thicken up the skin, and that's what bothers me. I think the public sees this as, okay, there they go again, we're raising revenue. What they don't know is, do they have the political courage to offset this with expense management? And I have confidence in the nine, 10, or 11 of us that we can get that done.
So that's a yes for you, Jim, right?
Well, you've seen, and I don't really say you, this council has seen many, many, many emails from me with regard to expenses. So this council up here knows where I stand on expense management, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderwoman Howman.
Thank you. David, yes, I think we're ready to make some hard decisions. We have a different council. This is my first anniversary. And just in the last year, Alderwoman Painter and I have been elected in our own right. We have a new member on the council. I believe, based on what I saw at our retreat, when was that? Months ago or a couple of weeks ago? I'm not sure. I felt like we were a more cohesive group, and if we're going to make cuts, we're going to have to stand together to do that. That's the only, and, you know, no, not any kind of, I didn't want this, but my other councilman did. If we say we're going to cut Zumba classes, sorry, Zumba people, it's just an example, then even if the vote is five to four to cut Zumba classes, we have to be united that, yes, we decided to cut Zumba classes. So whatever the situation is. And I also think we need to have some working sessions outside of our Monday evening, three Mondays a month, to have these discussions, and before April.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. And to answer your question, it's a resounding no. I don't think this council has the stomach to genuinely have the cuts conversation. I mean, when we talked about it, the Budget Task Force, I mean, you saw some of the emails that we got, the conversation that we had was spirited. I really, we speak in platitudes and in kind of very vague concepts of what cuts look like. And Alderman Lauer, you know, you're great principled, you know, I know where you're at, and I appreciate that, and that's one of my favorite traits about you. One of the challenges is that you have at any point, and Alderman can come up with a budget amendment to make a cut, but the real courage comes in in making a coalition of further of your colleagues to convince us to do that. And I'd love to entertain some of your cuts ideas. But the first question this council will then ask is, we'll turn to David and say, what's the impact on staff? And then we will turn to our constituents and say, what's the impact on them? At no point have we ever identified a key program that we are willing to live without. Golf comes up frequently. How many times have, I mean, since I've been on the council, we've talked about it several times, and this nebulous idea of, you know, what could it look like? And then David takes it upon himself to look at Highland Park. You know, I've sat through some of these conversations where I have no idea what the conclusion is. I mean, how does staff know what we're talking about? He looks at Highland Park, and then there's blowback from the public. Well, we don't want to lose our old discourse, you know, we can't do this. And then there's some council, I don't know if I can get behind this. We are just all over the place, left and right. And there's no coalition here that I think would really genuinely look at the major cuts that would have to come from our structural deficit, and we're looking at gutting the BCPA.
Well, and I think David is asking, I think maybe there's a different question. If I understand, I think Alderman Sage is asking if we're all ready to begin to make some cuts, maybe like the ones that are on the Budget Task Force.
I am saying that we are not. I don't think that this group here has ever, in my experience, demonstrated the willingness...
But we have a new council now, Scott.
I still don't think that's the case. I mean, think about how many times that we get a few emails on a topic that, you know, parks or zoo or whatever, and we stop what we're doing, we delay it. That's kind of our nature. Look at solid waste. We all agree that there's something that needs to be done. We haven't made the tough decisions, you know, and to delay this, there are so many pressing things that we have going on right now. And I can sit here and say, yeah, I'm going to support cuts. Yeah, I support cuts. But then when I get it in front of me, I still have my out to be like, well, this is just too much for my liking. And, you know, we can all identify, oh, we should, you know, cut administration. What is that, 1 percent of our budget, 2 percent tops? That's not going to fix our problem. We're talking major restructuring of what the city does, how it provides the services, and major venues going away, no longer existing. And is this council able to do that? Again, I'll cite Zumba. We couldn't do it for that, and I don't think we have the stomach for it now. So, you know, if we want to talk about cuts, bring it forward. Put a resolution on the table, put an ordinance together, talk to staff, get a second, and build your coalition. It's easy to say no up here, but we want, we like facts, we like analytics, and then we make our decision. And I don't think there's a problem with that, I think that's what the voters demand of us. And the folks that have run on a platform of gutting everything, cutting everything, have lost every single election, blown out. So I think the public's very clear on this. My calls tend to be more of, what can you do for me, not what can you get rid of? And I know that there's a variety of opinion, I try to weave it in a tapestry of what I get, but this council, I don't think would be able to do it. It's my opinion.
Alderwoman Schmidt.
So are you saying, Scott, that the items from the Budget Task Force that are recommended to us for cuts, that we won't cut them?
I think we can, but I think we would want to do it in a very analytical, thoughtful way.
I hope so.
But the way we talk about it right now, it's very, you know, we're going to make cuts, you know, we're going to make this happen, and I'm just not seeing the stomach for what that looks like. So the recommendations that were in there were like, BCPA was in there, is just shutting it down was one recommendation, selling golf courses. Some of the conversations I've had with my colleagues up here, whether it be a phone, email, or whatever, has been, I'm a little nervous about what this looks like. And do I think it'll happen at some point? Absolutely. But I think it's going to take us a long time to get there, a lot longer than it will be to, we're going to be further in the hole, deeper in the structural deficit at that point in time, and then we're going to be desperate. And I'm taking a very pessimistic view on it, but I got to share my opinion, because you asked.
Well, I guess I would challenge you then by saying, if you believe that we can't make those cuts, then why would you support a 1 percent sales tax? Because if you don't support a 1 percent sales tax, then we got to make cuts.
We got to make the cuts. I... Sure.
That's sort of rhetorical, but I, and I, I'm sorry, I have faith in us. I really do. I think that we're very smart and motivated people, and we're probably our own worst enemies. And I think that I was deeply encouraged by what I saw in the Budget Task Force report of the kinds of cuts that are recommended. They come from people who I, whose opinions I value a great deal. And I think we start there, and then we keep going, because I think we have to fundamentally rethink what municipal government is in the role of people's lives and how we collaborate with other governmental entities. And, you know, other people have said, we, I think Jim started off saying, we do so much on our own, in our own little silos, and we could do so much together. The model we've got with McLean County for Mental Health is a wonderful model. It's, you know, doubles in the details, but we'll work it out, because we're all part of one community. So, yes.
Alderwoman Painter.
Well, I appreciate your thoughts, Scott, but we do have to do both. And whether you do one first or the other, we've got to do both. And if you think that raising sales tax by 1 percent is painful, wait for the cuts, because that's going to be worse. So, you know, I think we need to gird our loins, people, and do it both. We have to, otherwise, things will get really bad. Thank you.
Okay. We're almost back to you.
I'm going to start with a rhetorical question, because I don't expect you to be answered tonight, but why was council considering a Zumba class? That, to me, is... That, to me, is perhaps a little bit of micromanagement, and maybe moving forward, we can focus on the big picture issues, because that's...
You've added levity to this. Thank you.
Oh, it is very important. I'm just suggesting that perhaps it's outside the realm of council's responsibilities. It's too big for us. But, okay, if we don't pass the sales tax increase this evening, we'll be staring down at a $7.4 million budget deficit next year, and we'll have very little time or flexibility to make changes, even if we pass it tonight. And I think that we need to. As I said before, it's the responsible thing to do. Even if we pass it, within four years, we'll be back to where we were. So we have to make cuts. And we, and I'm glad that you called us out on that. We need to be committed to that and restructuring to get where we need to be. But, you know, I think that we can, and I think we just need to keep challenging each other to make sure that, you know, our goal is in sight. And, you know, we talk about being at crisis. We're at a crisis now. I mean, last year, we couldn't balance our budget without pulling out of reserves. Next year, we can't balance our budget without pulling out of reserves, and I don't know that we have enough reserves to do that. So this is a crisis moment. That means that, yes, the timeline is not what we want. We're making a decision we feel forced into making, but that is the result of not looking forward and planning. We can do better in the future, and I think we all need to commit to being better in the future.
Alderman Lombway.
Sure. Okay, I'm going to say yes, but with, I think I share some of Scott's reservation because of what we've done in the past, but I do think, just looking at some of the projections here, we really don't have a choice. We're going to have to do it. We certainly can't raise taxes in perpetuity, and that's really the situation that we find ourselves in. We're going to need quite a bit of revenue, or, you know, be able to bake those cuts. And I think we really need to change fundamentally how we provide municipal services, because I don't think it's sustainable in the long run. If you look at some of our biggest cost drivers with labor increases and things like that, I do think that, you know, it's just something that we can't make up, you know, within one year, within two years. So I'm really looking for, you know, beyond what the Task Force has suggested, you know, for ways to be creative in how we provide those kinds of governments, those kinds of services. I do remember when we had the Budget Workshop back in March. It's something that I raised, not forcefully, but I, you know, I looked at, you know, our public safety cost. That's where most of our cost is coming from. Is there a way for us to be creative in the way that we do that, that we provide public safety? If anything, we may come to the conclusion to that, you know, it's not possible, but if we, at least, I'd like for us to give it a serious consideration. When you look at, you know, in terms of fire, for example, we have quite a bit of costly equipment there, you know? Could we find some efficiencies, ways of working together? And hopefully, you know, we can find that, either with the town or Normal. But I, so anyways, I do think that's something we need to look at very seriously, because that's where some of our biggest cost is coming from. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We've all talked several times, and the Sage challenge, we've responded to. I didn't, I didn't, I thought I made it clear, absolutely, as mayor. We have to, we have no choice, right? We have, whether it's getting rid of golf courses or other things, I don't know what that would be, but absolutely. So if there isn't anything further, we have the motion on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Schmidt.
Can I just ask a question, or I guess make a recommendation, that we come up with a timetable? I think Diana, you said that. We need a plan, and I think we'd all feel a whole lot better going out of this meeting if we said, and here's our timetable. And I don't expect us to craft it tonight, but, you know, I'd be happy, I don't want to ask Amelia, Scott, or Dave to do any more heavy lifting. You guys, thank you very much for all the work that you've done, but, you know, I think others of us can maybe put a proposal together or whatever. So I don't want us to leave without some sense of a commitment to that.
Well, almost immediately, I mean, obviously, our budget, we have the Budget Task Force report, so we're going to be certainly moving immediately on some of those things. We're going to, with, in terms of having people who use our services pay more, we're going to wait for the rate study to come back before we make those kinds of determinations on whatever that might be. And we also will obviously begin to look at programmatic changes and cuts. If we're going to privatize golf courses, we have to begin that process. What does that mean? And which would come first? If we're going to make any other changes in property tax rates, that has to be done, obviously, by December. We have the city manager's budget. I'm sure the city manager will be circling back with all of us as we go forward and putting that together with Patty Lynn. And so we have the unfolding of the budget process in terms of making those determinations. But, so I think those are just benchmarks that we can begin to look at. There's December, then there's January, February, and then obviously, you know, we're not going to run out the clock like we did in 2014, going toward the end of April 30th. So hopefully, we can get all of that done sooner rather than later. And Alderwoman, Alderman Black.
It's the pink, yeah. So to answer your question, and you kind of did, is I think the Budget Task Force recommendation's a good first place to start, because there's going to be some resolutions coming through with specific cuts. And to be clear, I'm not saying that the council doesn't have the stomach for the Budget Task Force recommendation cuts. I think that those are serious conversations we need to have, but I think that those are only some portion of what our structural deficit looks like, and I'd be curious to see what my colleagues would do.
Okay. All right, at this point, a yes vote is in favor of the motion as presented. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't start, I did now, okay? Okay. Not everybody's, I think not everybody's voted. Excuse me. The motion carries seven to two. There are two nays to announce. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Lauer and Alderman Lombway.
Okay. All right. At this point, since this special meeting was geared toward that, there are no mayoral or aldermanic comments, or city manager comments. I'm sorry. This is not, it's not, there it is. It's gone away. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say the five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.